The City Council Committee on Government Services co-posted with the Committee of the Whole and the Board of Registars. We'll meet in person on July 12th today, 2023, at 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing a home rule petition for a charter change relative to ranked choice voting. This meeting will be held in the City Council Chambers, 93 Washington Street, Salem, second floor. In person shall be the primary method of public access at such meetings. A secondary method of public access may be provided if technologically feasible. I think we just fixed that through Salem Access Television and/or remotely through Zoom. And there is an address provided. Persons requiring auxiliary aids and services for effective communications such as sign language, interpretive, an assisted listening device or printed material in digital format, or a reasonable modification in program, services, policies, or activities may contact the City of Salem ADA Coordinator at 978-619-5630 as soon as possible and no less than two business days before the meeting, program, or event. The City of Salem Committee of Government Services co-posted with the Committee of the Whole and the Board of Registars are meeting in council chambers on this day, July 12th, 2023, 6:00 PM for the purpose of discussing the home rule petition number 231, discussing matter number 231, home rule petition for a charter change relative to ranked choice So for our informational purposes, I think we're all here to kind of get a grasp on ranked choice voting one-on-one, and we're gonna, we've got Mr. Billy Jackson over here, who's one of, gonna be one of our guest speakers, I believe. Councilor Barrell?
Thank you, Chair Presnisky. If I may, do you want to introduce everyone to the presenters tonight? Do you want to introduce everyone to the presenters tonight? Excellent.
Yes.
So, thank you, Chair. So, tonight, we have up at the podium, thank you, we have Billy Jackson. He is the board chair of Rank the Vote, a national ranked choice voting organization, and is also a college math professor at North Shore Community College. We also have Bonnie Bain, our local advocate and League Women Voters Steering Committee, and as well as on Zoom, if you can promote him, we have Greg Dennis, and he's the Policy Director of Voter Choice Massachusetts.
Thank you. I believe it'd be just easy to have Mr. Jackson just go right into his presentation. And then for the public's information, after we share all the information with all the council and the Board of Registars and the public, we can also have the ability to take public comment. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. My audio okay here?
You gotta speak right, you gotta eat it.
Right into it? All right. Can you pull it closer, too? Oh, like that. Great. Much better?
Yep.
Excellent. Great. So let me go ahead and share my screen. All right. Just make sure I'm good. There we go. All right. So, thank you guys all for coming out here today, City Council, for hearing this talk and in consideration of ranked choice voting for Salem municipal elections. My name is Billy Jackson. I've been asked to be the speaker here. I am not a Salem resident. I live in Lynn, Massachusetts, grew up in Salem and Lynn. I am a math professor at North Shore Community College. I've been a local advocate for ranked choice voting in Massachusetts for some time. In 2016, I was one of the founding members of Voter Choice Massachusetts, which is the organization that grew the movement for the question two, ballot question, in 2020 for ranked choice voting statewide. And also in around 2020, I became a founding member of Rank the Vote, which is a national organization which grows ranked choice voting movements in other states across the country, similar to the Massachusetts one. I've been asked here to speak here by Bonnie Bain, who's the founder of Ranked Choice Voting for Salem, who's been working very hard to bring ranked choice voting to Salem, along with Liz Bratt from the Salem Democrats, Andy Varela and Alice Merkel, and many others who have had some interest in ranked choice voting so far. So, I've been asked to give kind of like a high-level overview of ranked choice voting. I am gonna get into some detail, and I, you know, I, there's so much we can get into. You know, I've tried to pick and choose. I do have areas where I can get into more detail if I'm asked to, and there may be situations where I'm kind of aware it might be too much, and in that case, I can always send more information after this presentation. Things I want to talk about today are ranked choice voting enactments to date across the world, US and in Massachusetts, some flaws in our current voting system, which have led to a lot of municipalities and states to bring ranked choice voting to their elections, talk about how ranked choice voting works in single winner elections and multi-winner elections, and I'll bring Bonnie Bain up to talk about why Salem would like ranked choice voting now for the elections in this city. So, across the world, ranked choice voting is very highly used. Australia has been using it for about 100 years in their federal levels of parliament, both houses. India and Ireland use ranked choice voting to elect the presidents of their country. Scotland and New Zealand use it in various municipal levels. Lots of countries across the world, especially modern democracies that are just forming how they're gonna vote, all tend towards ranked choice voting. It's often a lot of older democracies who adopted their voting and election systems before ranked choice voting was established in the late 1800s. Those are typically the democracies that don't widely use ranked choice voting. But a lot of places across the US have started to trend towards moving to ranked choice voting. A lot of you may be familiar that Maine and Alaska in 2016 and 2020 voted to start using ranked choice voting in their statewide elections. My wife just was playing the New York Times crossword puzzle last weekend and saw one of the clues was first state in US to use ranked choice voting, which I thought was kind of interesting. You know, this is not, it just speaks to, you know, this isn't being some new unknown concept. And municipally, it's in use in a lot of cities in the Bay Area, it's in use in Portland, Maine, which that successful use is what led to statewide adoption in the state of Maine. New York City just adopted it in 2019 and used it for the first time in 2021 very successfully for their mayoral elections. And lots of other cities across the country, big and small, use ranked choice voting in their municipal elections. And a lot of this has happened since about, you know, in the last few decades. And then a little bit more locally in Massachusetts, you guys may be aware that question two for statewide use of ranked choice voting did not pass in 2020. However, there are a couple municipalities that do use ranked choice voting in Massachusetts. Cambridge has been using it successfully for their nine-at-large seats on their city council since 1941. East Hampton used it for the first time successfully in 2021 after adoption in the late 2018s. And there are five other municipalities in Massachusetts that have passed it at the city council level and are awaiting home rule petition in order to use ranked choice voting. Further, the cities of Boston, Brookline, Williamstown, Somerville are putting forward active efforts to bring ranked choice voting to their cities and towns, and as of today, it feels like Salem is joining that crowd towards making the steps towards possibly using ranked choice voting in elections here. So, I'm gonna talk through a few flaws in elections, in our current election system. Now, there are many flaws in politics and elections. We could talk about money in politics, all sorts of things, but I am just gonna highlight a few specific ones that I think are important and really resonate with me particularly, and hopefully some of you, I know, I identify with a lot of you, and we'll talk through a few of these. So, this first one, this is a very, very famous election, I'm sure many of you are familiar with, and I could have chosen many more recent, many more local elections to exemplify this issue, but this is really the textbook example in politics for what's called the spoiler effect. And this happens in single winner elections pretty frequently. This was the US presidential election, the result in Florida in the year 2000. In this election, George W. Bush won the state of Florida by 537 votes. And what was really important here is that Ralph Nader was in the election and he had over 97,000 votes. And a lot of people started to wonder going into that election, you probably recall, should Ralph Nader drop out of the race? Could his presence in the race influence who won the race between George W. Bush and Al Gore? A lot of people started to wonder that. And so, exit pollsters were out there, they started to ask that question to Nader voters as they came out of the polls, and they found that 45%, they asked Nader voters, if Nader dropped out of the race, who would you have voted for? 45% of those voters said they would have voted for Al Gore, 27% they would have voted for George Bush, and 28% said they would not have showed up or just skipped that question on the ballot. Now, when you do the math, that leads to Al Gore would have won the election by over 16,000 votes in Florida, had Ralph Nader simply dropped out of the race. So, we, this is not something new, nobody is shocked, no jaws have dropped yet, we're familiar with this, this is not the only time this has happened, this happens quite frequently in politics, and we have a very well-known name for it, which is called the spoiler effect. I'd like to also point out, now, that, you guys may also, you may think about how maybe that could relate to some elections you have voted in, you also may realize that that would not actually relate to Salem municipal elections, because Salem has top-two runoff's, right? So, you don't end up with the spoiler effect in top-two runoff's. Top-two runoff's prevent that, which is really good. However, there is another problem here that could be affected in Salem elections, and this is an issue in the Boston mayoral preliminary election in 2013. This was the first election after Tom Menino retired from being mayor, and you see, we have a very, you know, wide field of candidates here, and this is the first election in Boston's history where Boston was a people-of-color majority. It was 53% of registered voters in Boston were people of color. And as you see, a very diverse field of candidates here, right? So, who ended up going on to the top two in the top-two runoff? Two white Irishmen. And why did that happen? You know, some people started to wonder, you know, they were kind of surprised that maybe a person of color didn't make it. Charlotte Goliard Ritchie, you can see, was very close at 14%, but what happened is that because there were multiple candidates of color in the race, they split the vote amongst a certain voting block, and Charlotte just missed the cut. And she suspected that something like this might happen before the election. So, what did she try to do? Her and her campaign were trying to get other candidates of color to drop out of the race. And the Boston Globe caught wind of this and wrote a pretty scathing editorial, and basically it said, "People of color are a 53% majority in the city of Boston. Don't force candidates of color to drop out of the race. Let democracy happen." And what's really interesting is democracy did happen, okay? Democracy, the way elections work right now, happened, which is, if you have too many similar candidates in a race, none of them will be elected, even if they have a majority of support, because they will split the vote, and none of them will get elected. And we've seen that through many elections, and we see it in presidential primary elections, where you have, you know, fields of 20 candidates. And we see oftentimes, we saw in, was it CD3? We've seen candidates win primary elections with 20% support, and we don't know if there was a preferred candidate, but multiple similar ones to them that all split, you know, 50% of the vote, that maybe would have been the preferred candidate for those districts. So, this is something that could affect preliminary mayoral elections or ward counselor elections in Salem, in the preliminaries. And another couple of examples, so I put together here a hypothetical Salem school committee election. So, we have five candidates on this ballot, and you pick up to three, right? That's how city, uh, school committee elections work in Salem, three candidates per election. And I don't know if any of you guys have, are familiar with this feeling, but if I really want Laureen Jackson, my mother, to win this election, and I also like Heidi Legere and Janelle Cameron, I might be hesitant to vote for Heidi Legere and Janelle Cameron. Why is that? Because that vote for them might be that one vote that puts them over my preferred candidate. And I'm sure this is not new to a lot of you, like, talked to people all over the state about this. This is called bullet voting, right? You've probably been encouraged to bullet vote at some point in your lives for a candidate in fear of this happening. So, this is a real problem in at-large multi-winner elections, all right? That's one issue that happens. And then the other issue that happens is called block voting, which is something you all are probably familiar with as well, right? We have three, uh, five candidates in this election, three people will win. We have a dark purple, a dark orange, a light orange, a light purple, and let's call that last one like a lavender candidate, okay? If we have 60% of voters that are purply, whether that be political ideology, you know, gender, race, wannas new school, whatever, kind of might be some popular voting theme for this election, if you have 60% of people that are purply and 40% of people that are orangy, how is this election gonna turn out? Well, you guys probably know, the 60% of the purple people are all gonna vote for the three purple candidates. And who gets elected here? Three purple candidates and zero orange candidates. Now, take a look again at that voter breakdown above. Is this a proportional result to the people in this municipality? No, it's not, right? And so, that is considered by many to be problematic of our current voting system, is that it does not produce proportional results in multi-winner at-large districts, and that reason is because of this strategy of block voting. So, these are four flaws of our current voting system, the spoiler effect, vote splitting, bullet voting, and block voting. And, you know, like I've said several times, these are probably not new to you. I think a lot of you have probably either actively participated in these before, or maybe detested these at same time, or at least been encouraged to do them, or thought about doing them advantageously. Now, instead, what we'd like to propose, what ranked choice voting for Salem would like to propose, is ranked choice voting for municipal elections, which fixes these flaws, okay? So, for ranked choice voting, instead of picking just one candidate, ranked choice voting lets you rank the candidates in the order that you prefer them, okay? Fairly simple. Now, I know there are two different types of elections in Salem. I'll talk about both of them and how ranked choice voting could be applied to both of them today. One of them is single winner elections, which is the mayoral election and the ward counselors, and then the other one are the multi-winner elections, which is the school committee and the ward at-large counselors. I'm not missing any elections there, am I? I hope not. All right. So, what's important for voters to understand is what it's like to vote in a ranked choice voting election. Counselors, city clerk's office, you'll be very concerned and have questions about, you know, the mechanics of a ranked choice voting election, how it works, and I'm here to help answer those questions to the best of my ability, or direct towards resources that can answer those questions. I've never conducted an election myself as a city clerk. But in terms of voters, you know, voters wanna know, what's it like to vote in an election? And what I liken this too often is, when I buy a car, right, buy my 2017 Honda Civic, when I went there, all I needed to do was drive the car in order to determine whether I was gonna buy it or not, right? I didn't need to know how the engine works and the combustion works and the brakes work. I don't need to know all of these really fine, nitty-gritty details in order to drive a car, right? And same for voters. Voters don't really need to know all the nitty-gritty details of how ranked choice voting works in these very specific instances in order to vote in a ranked choice voting election. All you need to know is how to rank your choices. So, this talk is kind of at the high level. Again, I'm interested in getting into the details as needed or directing to further resources. So, right now, in our elections, our ballot looks something like this, where we'll have a list of candidates, and we pick one candidate, right? And I bet a lot of you, I know I have, walked into an election booth on election day before, I've seen my favorite candidate in the ballot, and I passed over my favorite candidate in order to vote for a different candidate. Why did I do that? Because I feared that my top choice didn't actually have a chance of winning, and I was afraid if I voted for that candidate, that my vote would be wasted, okay? So, I had to vote strategically, okay? Under ranked choice voting, you don't need to do that. Instead of only having one, you get multiple choices. So, you get to indicate who is your first choice. If that candidate doesn't win, who's your second choice? If that candidate is eliminated and doesn't win, who would be your third choice, right? And so, that, the ranked choice voting ballot just widens the ballot, allowing you to indicate your choices. You know, it's like if my wife went to go get pizza for dinner, right? And I said, "All right, I want pepperoni pizza." Well, they, we're out of pepperonis, like, I wouldn't want her to bring me back anchovies, okay? Like, I have a second choice, and I want to be able to indicate that second choice. So, I'll talk a little bit more in depth on how single winner ranked choice voting elections work now, kind of a little bit, little look under the hood, okay? So, under single winner ranked choice voting, a candidate must get a majority of the votes either in the first round or in the instant runoff rounds to win, okay? So, I've got a couple mock elections here to talk through how this works. So, let's suppose we have four candidates in the race, dark orange, dark purple, light purple, and light orange. And what we first do is we only look at the first choice on everyone's ballot, okay? There are no points for second, third, fourth choice, nothing like that, that's a misconception. We only look at the first choice of everyone's ballot, okay? And we count them all up, and we ask, does any candidate have a majority of support? And here, we see dark orange does have a majority of support, they have 55% of support. So, therefore, election over. Dark orange is the winner. We do not even look at the second choice on a single ballot in this case, okay? Anyone concerned about ranked choice voting, later choices, gaming a system like that is not true, okay? In this case, second choices are not even looked at, okay? It cannot prevent a majority candidate from winning an election, all right? So, and that's pretty standard, dark orange would win in our current system, too, so, good. This next example is where I think ranked choice voting really shines, okay? So, we have the same four candidates here, dark orange, dark purple, light purple, light orange, and now we have different percents of first-choice votes, okay? Here we see, we ask, does any candidate have a majority? And the answer is no. So, the way ranked choice voting works is you now eliminate the candidate in last place, okay? And what's great about ranked choice voting is the voters who voted for light orange, their votes are not wasted or thrown away, okay? Their vote still counts, okay? It's kind of like how it works in like runoff elections, like top-two runoff's, almost like preliminaries to general elections, like, your vote still counts, you still have a say. So, we look at their ballots, and we say, who was your second choice? And then, whoever was the second choice, their vote, those voters' votes go towards that candidate, right? So, in this made-up hypothetical election, let's say those 5% of votes were distributed like this, 4% of them went to dark purple, dark orange, you know, the orangy ideologies, and, you know, every voter's unique, so 1% of them went to dark purple. So, now, again, so this is the second round. Now, we ask again, does any candidate have a majority? Does any candidate cross the threshold of a majority? And the answer is no. So, what are we gonna do? We, again, eliminate the last-place candidate, and we tell those voters, your votes aren't wasted and thrown away, they still count. Who would have been your next choice if, you know, knowing that you couldn't have light purple? So, we look at the next choice on the ballot, this could be the third choice on someone's ballot, too, if they went light orange and light purple, and we take a look, and then those votes now count towards their next choice. And so, in this example, we assume the purply ideologies are similar, and so now, dark purple has 55%, dark orange has 45%, and so, dark purple is declared the winner, okay? Now, I think this is a great thing in terms of fairness and fair election outcomes, all right? Because if you look at this municipality as a whole, 55% of the people are purply, right? And 45% of the people are orangy, right? Under ranked choice voting, the purply candidate of the majority gets elected. Under our current system, who gets elected? The candidate with the most votes, right, the first-place votes only, which would have been dark orange, right? So, the candidate from the minority ends up being the elected official, right? So, this is something that I think where ranked choice voting really shines. So, additionally, we could talk about multi-winner elections, and this is also known as proportional representation, right? So, for two elections in Salem, at-large city councils and school committee, we would recommend some form of multi-winner ranked choice voting. Now, I'll say right off the bat, there are several different variations of multi-winner ranked choice voting, so that might be something that gets kind of figured out in the weeds later, if chosen to go forward with this. I'm gonna go through a method called single transferable vote, which is pretty much the most common one used, and what I personally would recommend using, as would Voter Choice Massachusetts as a whole, okay? So, the ballot looks no different, okay? The ballot is still the same. You just get to indicate your candidates in the preference that you like them, okay? All right. Now, in order to win a ranked choice voting, multi-winner ranked choice voting election, a candidate must surpass the threshold, okay? So, for a single winner election, the threshold was a majority, right? Half, right? When there are multiple seats available, those, the threshold is always different, okay? The way I like to think of it is, in order to, if there's one seat, right, well, if only one person ran, then they would be the clear elected person. In one seat, in order for there to be a contest, there must be two people to run, so therefore, you need to beat that person, so you need more than one half, right? If there are two open seats, well, if there're only two people running, then they're both gonna get elected, right? In order for it to be a contested election, there need to be three people running, right? So, therefore, you need to have more than all the other candidates, which would just be more than one-third, okay? So, two seats, one-third, and so on. So, if there are three seats, you need to have more than one-fourth, right? And in general, if there are N seats, I guess really Salem is only concerned about three and four, but if there are N seats, the threshold is one over N plus one, that's kind of the threshold, and then you just add one vote onto that, and once that is met, the candidate is considered elected. Oh, yeah, that's a typo there. That should be 20%, thank you, Alice. All right. So, let's see a mock example play out, right? So, here we have school committee election with three winners, all right? So, we have some, so first, I wanna talk about what is the threshold in order to win this election, we already talked about it. For three winners, it's gonna be one-fourth, so 25% is gonna be the threshold in order to win a ranked choice voting election, right? So, and I have these percents here for these five candidates, and this is the percent of first-choice votes for all of these candidates, all right? first choice votes for all of these candidates, alright? So we know the threshold is 1 over N plus 1, so 25% in order to get elected. So let's take a look at this graphically. And again, this is a mock hypothetical election. I also do have two elections that I can tap into, one from Cambridge, the most recent Cambridge at-large election, and one from the most recent one in Minneapolis, that I could show for a, you know, more realistic example. Just when the large numbers get really large, it's kind of hard to drill down and understand it as a first example. So, here we have dark purple, who has 35% of the vote. Now, they crossed that 25% threshold, okay? So, what happens here is the dark purple voters have what's called a surplus, okay? They have more votes than are needed to win, right? So you can imagine, like strategically as a voter, you might start to wonder, "Oh, I think this person's really gonna win, I still want my vote to count, should I vote for another one?" So, ranked choice voting handles that dilemma. The way it does it is it allocates these surplus votes towards second choices of the voters, okay? Cool. And there are different methods for doing that, okay? Which we can get into later. So, what we're gonna first do is we're gonna reallocate the second choices of some of these surplus voters towards their second choices. And that's gonna be round two. So that'll give us the results in round two. So you'll see, dark purple is now right down to the threshold, as some of those surplus votes were transferred towards the dark orange, light purple, and lavender candidates, okay? One thing you guys may be wondering is, could it be possible that those surplus votes put rust over the threshold too? And yeah, sure it could. And then we would just do the same thing, is reallocate some of those surplus votes, okay? But that didn't happen here, but, thought I'd mention. Alright, so now we have no surplus votes to distribute. So now, we work through the election the same way we do the single winner election, which is, we look at the last place candidate, which in this case is lavender, and we're gonna eliminate that candidate. And now, the votes, all the voters who voted lavender as their first choice, or maybe second choice, their votes still count towards their next choice. And then we redistribute it to those candidates. And here in this example, the bulk of those votes go to violet, which then makes violet our third winner for the third seat in this election. So, we have dark purple, dark orange, and light purple as winners of this election, okay? And I think this is great, because remember, in this district, we had a voter breakdown of 60% of voters being purply, 40% being orangey. In this election, what we get is two purple candidates that win, and one orangey candidate that win. So what we get are proportional representation to the voter base, alright? And this is a great thing, right? Under our current system, block voting is a strategy that can often happen. And block voting is something that has traditionally been something that has been used to exclude minorities from representation in government, okay? But here, minority parties can getting excluded. And not just minority parties, but, you know, minority demographics that have long been underserved in government can see representation in government. And like I said, I do have two examples here. The Cambridge one is a bit of like a PDF, kind of that goes through all the different rounds and counts all the votes. I also have the Minneapolis one, which is a little bit more into interactive and more of a graphic. So I could either send this presentation along, or get into these at the end in more detail if asked. Alright? Cool. So, that's how ranked choice voting works, alright? As for some arguments for and against ranked choice voting, Alice, do you have a question? You're just kinda looking, just looking, alright, cool. So, again, I've been doing this for a long time, giving talks, you know, going, leading up to the ballot question. I've heard lots of arguments against ranked choice voting. The ones I hear the most, the first one is that ranked choice voting is too complicated. That was one argument actually that Governor Charlie Baker put forward in 2020, a month before the election. I disagree with this argument entirely. I think it's ridiculous to think that people of Alaska and people of Maine are competent enough to use ranked choice voting, and people of Salem are not competent enough to use ranked choice voting. I think that's ridiculous. Many places around the world and country are using ranked choice voting, it's not too complicated, especially when it comes to voters, right? Ranking candidates? I mean, my five-year-old niece can rank her favorite ice cream flavors. Ranking things is not inherently difficult thing. I've heard an argument that, in terms of it being too complicated, that it could pose undue challenges for people who English is not their first language. However, I would point to the fact that a lot of cities, Cambridge, New York City, have a lot of, have higher rates of people who, English is not their first language, than Salem. And lots of other places already use ranked choice voting. You know, there are materials and ways to get out and spread awareness and make sure people are prepared to vote, to understand ranked choice voting and use it. Another argument I've heard is that ranked choice voting would be too expensive. That is an argument, if a city or state needed to upgrade all of their voting machines in order to be ranked choice voting compatible, there could be costs associated with that. A lot, some cities and towns already have voting machines that are out to date and need to upgrade them anyways. I'm not exactly sure where Salem is in that conversation, but, you know, some upgrades need to be made sometimes. Lots of municipalities across the country are actually like, you know, out of compliance with their voting machines. Most modern machines, if you guys have modern machines already, actually are RCV compatible already, so that's not an issue. But if we're using older machines, then the upgrades are usually kind of ready for anyways. Another, and also, there are actually cost-cutting measures with ranked choice voting, which I, Bonnie is gonna get into in a bit. One other argument against ranked choice voting is it could delay election results. That's a possibility. You could have, you might not know the results of the election before you go to bed at night on Election Day. I think good, fair results are worth the wait, but that's a possible argument. And another argument I've heard is that there are other options, other than ranked choice voting. I've studied these options in great depth. You're gonna have a hard time finding any practical use of these theoretical voting methods. And some people are very gung-ho about these other methods, that they believe mathematically are really strong voting methods, but it's all based in theory and they haven't been tested yet. And really, it takes testing something to really identify sometimes where the flaws or the problems can exist. And ranked choice voting is very battle-tested. It's been used in Cambridge since the 1940s, in Australia for 100 years. So, you know, it's a very robust voting method. And I would like to invite Bonnie Bain up here now to talk about some arguments for ranked choice voting for Salem.
Thanks, Billy. So go with your strengths, and mine is not public speaking, hence me bringing in the math professor. So I'm gonna go through our arguments for why Salem. Keep in mind that I did some of this research over a year ago now, so I don't have the most up-to-date numbers, but I'm sure that with the support of city councilor staff, I could dig into more recent numbers. Whoops, Billy, can you help me real quick?
Oh, I can.
I don't know what I did.
It's alright, if you just hit the down arrow, you're good. Hit the down arrow to keep going.
Um, my counselor's reminding me that I need to give my address. I'm at 22 R. West Avenue. So, one of the things that I dug into when I started looking into RCV for Salem was the cost associated and the work associated with our preliminary elections. And we seem to have a lot of those here, more recently, because we had to reelect a mayor. So in 2021, and I was given these numbers, we spent around 45K for that preliminary election. And then, that's 140 temporary hires. Our clerk's office works so hard to get all of those people ready for this big party where we all come out and vote. And they do incredible work, but it's a lot to put that on. And that doesn't include police detail. I didn't have all the complete numbers that go into a preliminary, but I just wanted to give you that. Um, Billy, can you come back? I'm sorry.
Can you refer to voter turnout numbers?
Yeah.
Is that the next?
Okay, I got it.
There you go.
Um, so, this one was interesting to me as well. I think it's no secret that preliminary elections have a lower turnout than general. But, I think we've gotten a little better over the years. 2017 is really depressing, but, but it's still something to be said that all the attention, right, goes to these big national or state elections, and it's really hard for counselors or school committee members to get local people's attention on these local elections. And so it could take the burden off of everyone in our community to really just focus on one election. And I argue that we might see a higher turnout if we just have one election that we can focus on. When I talk to people, I don't think I was alone in feeling as if voting for at-large and school committee was kind of weird and challenging, and you can't really be as sincere as you want to be with your vote. I know I had that challenge, and I would be like, "Do I, do I want to waste that vote, right? Do I want to bullet vote?" So, that is something that, it's not just me that I've heard, people don't want to feel like they have to be strategically savvy, they want to vote sincerely. And so that would, that would help our community if we could eliminate that. And the other thing I like to bring up is that we do have parents who rank their schools right now. And I haven't heard from parents that that's a difficult thing to do. It's certainly just a certain demographic in our community, but I just wanted to point out that we do do that in a way already in our community in some form. I'm gonna hand it back to Billy to give further, because these are his slides, but I think this is applicable to Salem as well. Thank you.
So yeah, you know, and I also want to reiterate this point right here, because I think it's a really important one, that one of the main benefits, why a lot of municipalities across the country have moved towards ranked choice voting, is because it enables them to eliminate a preliminary election. Preliminary elections serve a good purpose. You know, we talked about the spoiler effect, right? And we talked about how that doesn't happen in mayoral elections in Salem, because we have a preliminary election, and then the top two advance, and then everyone gets to kind of recalibrate and have their second choice still counted if desired, right? So that's a great thing, the preliminary election than the general. Ranked choice voting handles both of those in one election. That's the beauty of it, and that's why a lot of places have started to go towards it. Instead of having a low turnout preliminary election that decides who's gonna be on the ballot in the higher turnout election, instead, there can just be one high turnout election in which everyone is kind of on the ballot and everyone has a chance, and we don't run the risk of issues like spoiler effect and vote splitting. So that's a major benefit towards ranked choice voting. So thank you for bringing that up, Bonnie. You know, the data shows, you know, what the rates are in Salem. And those types of rates, I actually looked these up beforehand. The 2017 election was kind of a funky one in Salem, in terms of what was actually on the ballot that year. But, you know, these are not unique to Salem, this is a general trend in any municipality that you look at. So a couple other benefits of ranked choice voting. There have been many studies that shown that ranked choice voting leads to more people of color in elected office, especially women of color, and it leads to more women in elected office. There are studies here that, you know, in the links here, which I could send to the city council if desired. And there are even more studies done, actually, just in the last three years on this topic, that I could send to as well. Another positive effect of ranked choice voting is less negativity. I don't know how much of a problem that is in Salem, if a problem at all, but there have been studies, numerous studies, that showed that voters felt that races were less negative where ranked choice voting was used. And it makes sense a little bit, because, you know, in elections today, you know, you could win with 20% of a vote, 40% of a vote, depending on how many candidates are in the race. You might just, I mean, we see mudslinging in elections all the time, because oftentimes, especially, you know, statewide or federal elections, you just have to beat one candidate. So you can, as long as you make that person look bad, then that can win you the election, right? However, in ranked choice voting, that doesn't work, because if you can't get a majority, you're going to need to require second choice votes from voters in order to get over that majority and be elected. You know, I've heard from people who have worked in Minneapolis on this campaign, and they have said things like, they've said, "In non-ranked choice voting districts, if you're going door-knocking and you see a lawn sign for one of the candidates that you're not supporting, you skip that house." Okay? In ranked choice voting districts, you go and knock on that door, and you talk to them, you say, "Hey, I see that you're supporting this candidate. Why do you like that candidate?" And you listen to them, and you try to see, what does that candidate have in common with your candidate? So you're searching and you're talking about more commonalities than the things that divide you, which brings about more positive campaigning in general. As for implementation, technical implementation, so both major voting system vendors in Massachusetts are both ranked choice voting ready. Dominion Voting has full ranked choice voting capabilities in their Democracy Suite and ESNS. They can export their records, they can create an exportable CBR, which then, we can, there's other third-party softwares that can be used to conduct and tabulate the results. And as for implementation, VoterMassachusetts is a great resource, they have lots of connections. Like I said, East Hampton already uses it. You know, the town clerk of East Hampton has offered to consult with Salem if they would have questions about the technical implementation. You know, there are allies in Cambridge that could help out, and, you know, there are some really smart people in Massachusetts who can help answer these types of questions. Also, we have, you know, a lot of allies across the country who have already implemented this in Maine and such, that can help out. And we have very close ties with Fair Vote, which is a large national organization supporting ranked choice voting, and the Ranked Choice Voting Resource Center. So then it comes to next steps for Salem, and Bonnie's coming back up here.
This might be something for Andy to clarify, because I think it would be potentially him that puts it forward? No? Okay. I think we do have an ultimate ask here, that with further conversation and education of the public, that council put this forward for home rule petition. So that's the ultimate ask. We understand that there are probably lots of questions and more conversations we have, but I just wanted to be clear that we're not just here to talk in theory, we do want an outcome and hopefully to see this move forward for Salem. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Counselor Cohen.
Thank you, Chair President Skye. Through you to Mr. Jackson. If you wouldn't mind taking your voter choice ranked choice voting hat off and putting your math teacher hat on, because I'm assuming you know a lot about probability and statistics. One thing I think about, because I'm pretty familiar with ranked choice voting, as we talked about, is just using at-large in Salem as an example. In Salem, we can vote for up to four people. As you said, some people vote for one, or four, or somewhere in between. As you said, some people vote for one or four or somewhere in between. But I'm assuming that everyone has a first choice, might even be the candidate themselves. And if they do feel like they should vote for four people because they have an opportunity to vote for four people, I always think that the, that the fourth vote that they have sometimes is not based on, you know, they really like someone. It's like, you know, maybe they saw signs on the same yard or they liked the person's name or whatever it may be, or they heard about that person. But it seems to me, so this is where I'm asking you to put your statistics or probability hat on, it seems to me that that fourth vote has the same weight as the first vote.
In current elections? Yeah, it does. Yep, absolutely. Which is interesting when you think about it in the light that you put it, right? Right? Yeah, I mean, I completely agree. And under ranked choice voting, that fourth choice does not come into play. It can't hurt your prior choices in any way. Whereas under our current system, it could. That vote for that, oh, I got a fourth vote, I might as well vote for this person that waved to me holding a sign on the way in here, right? That fourth vote could be the one that gets that candidate one vote over your first choice. And what's nice about ranked choice voting is that does not happen in that. So, yeah, that's a nice observation.
Counselor Dominguez.
Thank you, Chair. I've been a member of the committee through you. Thank you for your explanation. I had a simple question. How does that work on a important question that sometime we have in the ballot? How is the process work in the same category like you mentioned on the candidate? For example, this year, we have any, any question in the ballot?
Oh.
I mean, three, four, five questions in the ballot. How does that work?
That might be something that is actually like in the city charter or like constitution or something like that. I know at least some places it cannot like legally affect ballot questions and any ballot question or initiative has to be phrased as a two-choicer. Personally, I would recommend that ballot initiatives and questions stay that way, that they are not infected by ranked choice voting. That'd be my personal recommendation. But it's up to the city to kind of look into whether any municipalities use that, pros and cons. You know, that's something that I suppose. Again, it could legally not be possible unless you change like a constitution or something. I have, I'm not aware of anyone that does that. And I would recommend probably just keep it to elected officials and not ballot initiatives. That's a good question.
Thank you. Chair, may I follow up a question? Similar, but another category. You mentioned many cities and towns that already adopted this system. Do you have any statistic on how long it took for them to adjust to the new system?
Hmm, adjust in like what kind of way?
In a way, I know, it's something being implemented. I figured out we need to have an education program so everybody exactly get to know the new system. Do you have any, say for example, we decided to go with this system, how long do you think it's going to take us to educate the city on the new way of voting?
I can let Billy speak to other examples, but one of the things I failed to talk about was that we're very fortunate in Salem to have the League of Women Voters. A little bit of self-plug because I'm on the steering wheel. But there's buy-in from this very local, nonpartisan civic organization to help with education. We cannot do that alone. We don't have the capacity to do that alone. So we've also been in conversation with Barry Institute of Politics, who could help host forums. I know I've had conversations with other organizations like the Salem Dems has offered to support. And now that's a partisan organization, so we have to be careful there. But, but there are groups in our community who are open to supporting that conversation and helping to educate people if this was to come up as something.
And just to add on to that, you know, obviously lots of cities and towns that have gone through this change have had to be faced with that question. And they generally very, very, very much front-load this education, right? You know, they have their first election and they front-load a whole lot of information and education at voters through various means, through the government system themselves funded, through the, you know, side organizations. I know Rank the Vote New York City was a big play, player in educating New York City voters. And yeah, it's, it's, it's an effort. It's an effort. But, you know, it's gone very well. In one of the slides, I think in one of the slides, let me see if I can get back to those slides. I think I speak to... No, don't have that slide here. Apologize. But there is a research about places that have used ranked choice voting, their adoptions, and they asked voters, you know, how satisfied are you with this change? And there were very large percent outcomes indicating that we're glad that the place made, that the municipality made the change.
Do you have any studies on how increased the voter turnout, how long, I mean, how the numbers and how did diversity of elected officials get increased?
Yeah, I may not have them here. Let me see if I have them here. I don't think I have them here. Yeah, no, I don't, I don't have them in my extra slides. I apologize. But I can provide those, that very thorough amount of information for the council.
Thank you. Counselor Merkel.
What's, I'm sorry, one second. Sorry. Someone might be able to answer that question. Greg Dennis is one of our presenters. I think you just have to promote him to a panelist and he may be able to answer that question. So he's on Zoom. He's one of our presenters. Are you able to promote him?
I've got it.
Thank you. Sorry, Alice.
Did he just say that he wants to take it?
So the question, the question basically is, does ranked choice voting draw out more people to vote?
Yeah.
That's basically it, correct?
And I bet Greg is probably on his computer right now whipping up the links right now and probably going to put them in the chat that could point to a lot of those studies.
Okay, Mr.?
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Okay, Mr. Dennis, if you're on a...
Can you hear me?
I mean, yes, softly. Speak loudly, please.
I'll speak loudly then.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, like Billy said, the data exists and we could provide links to it and resources for you. This story is around, Billy did point to some studies referencing more people of color being elected, more women running and being elected. In terms of overall turnout, the turnout trend has been generally going up. I'll say that with a caveat, that turnout is a very difficult thing. The causes of, turnout itself is easy to measure, just what's the voter turnout. But the causes of the voter turnout and turnout increases are debated when people look at turnout increases or decreases because it can be due to the adoption of ranked choice voting. It could be due to a particularly competitive race. It could be due to the mood of the electorate. But the trend as a whole has been towards higher turnout in these, in these municipalities.
And those are the study, that summarizes the studies that I was referencing to as well.
Counselor Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Prasniewski. First of all, thank you for the presentation. I really appreciate it. And I'd like to take this opportunity, since we have the city clerk here, our voting's, our voting's office, all the people involved in our elections, to thank them. They work really hard to make our elections top-notch and run smoothly, so you're very much appreciated. I'd just like to make a comment and then had a question. I'd like to comment on the idea of it being confusing. And I just wanted to point out that our elections are already confusing for people. I think a lot of the people we engage with tend to be people that, you know, follow elections and local government, but when you get out, out there with residents, you know, with busy lines and jobs and such, there's a lot of confusing, confusion regarding the preliminaries. And I have the experience of having won a preliminary and lost a general. And what was interesting to me is that for quite a long time after the preliminary and after the general, people thought I was a city councilor because I had won the election. People reached out to me, they asked me questions, they congratulated me. And I had to explain that, no, there was an election after the preliminary and I lost that one and that one, you know, was the one that counted. So, so there is some confusion already. That's why I feel, you know, that's what's attractive to me. And I also know someone else who was door knocking after their preliminary and they heard several comments on the door, why are you still door knocking? You won. So I just wanted, I wanted to offer that perspective that I have. And also, a lot of elections can be fatiguing for people when you, when you have a lot of them. To your comment about for the multiple winner races, when you had said, you talked about reallocating some of the surplus voters. How do you decide which surplus voters to consider their other choice when, when you made that? That was my one area of confusion. Thank you.
And that's a very easy area to be confused on. It's a, and the answer is there's not just one method either. This is where different ranked choice voting municipalities actually can use different methods to determine that. For example, Cambridge uses a method of random allocation. So they will take those voters, the, you know, let's say, let's say there's 20,000 voters who voted for a candidate. The threshold is 15,000, and so that's a surplus of 5,000 votes. They will pick a random 5,000 votes out of those 20,000, and those voters are the ones who will have their second choice counted. Now, some, see some nodding. I see some slightly concerned faces out there too, right? Why do their votes count and not mine, right? So if you were to think about like what would be a more fair way, as maybe challenging and as weird as it may sound, to do this transfer, maybe some of you might come up with the idea that, well, let's see. Basically, 15,000 people were needed to win, 20,000 people voted for the person, so we needed 75% of those voters in order to secure the race for that candidate. Why don't we take 75% of every person's vote and keep them there? Essentially splitting everyone's vote into portions. And so if I voted for that candidate, 0.75 of my vote would stay with that candidate. And then 0.25 of a vote of mine would then go towards my second choice. And so that method is called fractional transfer. And while it may sound a little confusing on the surface the first time, the more you think about it, it really, you know, most modern places that use ranked choice voting have adopted that method of doing it because it really does make the most sense as being the most fair way to transfer these votes. There's another method too, but we won't even talk about that. So there are, there are other methods. And, you know, that's just what I would recommend. Again, the city council could convene, they could consult with Voter Choice Massachusetts, they could consult with Fair Vote and see, you know, what type of transfer makes most sense to them.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Counselor Varela.
Thank you, Chair Prasniewski, and thank you, Mr. Jackson and Bonnie Bain for the great presentation. This is the second time I've seen it and I'm still learning a lot and I appreciate your passion with this.
There's a lot to be learned. There's still more.
So I've got two comments and why I'd like to see us move forward. I know this is not going to be the first conversation regarding ranked choice voting, but I wanted to say why I think this is a benefit for our city and why we should be seriously thinking in this. First one is eliminating the primary. I think that, you know, when it comes to our elections and our city clerk, it seems like, you know, we know when election season is here because it seems to be a stress point for the office because basically it's all hands on deck with the limited staff that the clerk's office does have. Like the election needs to happen and needs to happen in an appropriate manner. So it's basically all hands on deck. We need to get this done. I think eliminating that primary, not only obviously will save money, but will give our clerk's office more time to really get down to what needs to happen, prioritize, and do it without being so stressed out. Because that preliminary, you know, once the preliminary hits, they, our clerk's office only has a couple of months to really get their stuff back in line for November. The second comment and why is, you know, I believe we still have a problem with voter engagement in our city. And I think it's safe to say that our current way we vote is not working. You know, I really believe that when it comes to voter engagement, we need to make the way we vote less confusing and figure a way to get more people to vote. Because when it comes to 25% of the electorate coming out to vote, that's not enough. And I think that simplifying the way we vote, eliminating the primary, it really lets people know that we're voting, you are voting once on this date, and that's what it is, here we go. So I really think that this is something that we should definitely take seriously into revising the way we vote. So for that, thank you.
Counselor Mussillo.
Thank you, Chair. Not being a member of the committee, thank you for the presentation. It's the first time I've heard a discussion of multi-seat ranked choice voting, and so I do appreciate that. Yeah, I have, I have been advocating for ranked choice voting at the state level when it was on the ballot. But first, I have a couple of comments. The studies that you had about minority and women candidates and that this helps them, yes, please send those because I do have questions about that. And also the Counselor Dominguez's questions about how, if it increased voter participation and minority voter participation, because that's very important. All right. And I will also add a comment for any candidates in the room. You always go to the houses with your opponent's signs, always, always, always. Number one, don't say that. That's a bad thing to say because you do not know who put the sign there. I also, I also had a problem with your statement about you don't need to know the nuts and bolts, you just need to vote. If people are going to feel that the system has integrity, they need to understand how it does work. So I know what you're saying, that it's complicated, but it's not too complicated and it needs to be explained and people need to feel comfortable that this is not, you know, that something isn't happening in the city clerk's office to make people win that maybe shouldn't have. And so that's, that was a troubling statement to hear.
And I, I agree with that.
Okay. All right. So have any of the local elections in Cambridge or East Hampton, I think they've had one under ranked choice voting, have any of those gone, been challenged in court? Not necessarily for ranked choice voting, but challenged by a candidate who felt that either they won, they lost by one vote or anything like that? Have any of those gone to court? Do you know?
Craig Dennis is raising his hand and he's kind of like a more expert on that type of content than me, so I'm going to defer to him to answer those questions.
Okay.
Hi, thank you. So East Hampton's election, one election was not brought to court. Cambridge, there was a case decades ago, Mick Sweeney versus the city of Cambridge, I believe, where one candidate challenged and it went up to the Supreme Judicial Court, which said that Cambridge's method was, I think, quote, "a more exquisite way of achieving the will of the voters." And so the, the court affirmed Cambridge's method as valid. There have been, you know, it's been brought to court at the federal level in years past and in all times, it was, including in Maine. And, and in all times, it was affirmed as, you know, a constitutional and valid way to vote that did not violate any federal or state constitutional provisions.
Thank you. That really wasn't my question. My question was if any of them had been challenged, just a candidate versus another because of discrepancies in a ballot. of discrepancies in a ballot or whatever, not necessarily challenging ranked choice voting as a method, just any sort of a challenge that would bring it to court.
No, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Do you know how many pages the regulations are in Cambridge that govern ranked choice voting?
I do not offhand. I do know that the home rule petitions for ranked choice that have been proposed in municipalities around the state are typically about one page front and back.
So do the home rule petitions need to include the regulations being used in the, in the ranked choice voting process?
They include a lot of detail. There are some details that are left, that are sort of implementation minutia that are typically preferred to be left to the clerk's discretion, but they include a lot of the detail of the, how the count works.
Okay. So here's my, here's my question, and anyone can jump in and answer this. I am 1,000% comfortable with this at the state level because the Secretary of State would be writing regulations that would govern all elections in the state, and then our city clerk would have those thousands of pages of regulations to fall back on when she is brought to court, which has happened. And they go through every detail of the process, and she has, she has won in court because she follows the letter of the law that comes from the Secretary of State's office. So that is where I'm a little uncomfortable, is if we are writing regulations and then, and the clerk has some discretion in what is happening, and it goes to court, and people challenge that discretion and challenge the way it's run, that's where I think that there's discomfort in Salem. And so that, I, I am, I, I really do support ranked choice voting, but that's where I can't get over the hump right now. So I don't know if anyone has any comments on that.
Greg, do you believe that we have any contacts at Fair Vote who may be able to help with that?
I, I think, I think there's an interesting question about what regulations we're talking about. Most of the regulations that come from the Secretary of State's office are independent of the particular voting method. So, for example, the chain of custody of the ballots, the ballot boxes, how recounts happen in blocks of 50 votes. Those sorts of, like, the CMR regulations that are promulgated by the Secretary of State's office can be used in a ranked choice voting local election in the same way that they're used in elections today. So I think, for me, and while I'm coming at this obviously as an advocate, I do not see it as a major concern because those regulations are independent of the voting method, and then the home rule petition that's passed is a law passed by the legislature, would be a law passed by the legislature, that would prescribe how the count works and would be there to defend the law as Salem implements it. So we could look perhaps in a fine grain way at what individual provisions or regulations might be left unstated and, and think about how we could perhaps encode those into the home rule. But by and large, between, between the state regulations that apply independent of the voting method and the home rule petition language, there's not a whole lot of leeway about how one would go about implementing it.
Okay. So at one point, I thought that this was brought in as moving forward with single-voter elections. Is that correct? Anyone?
Councilor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Posniewski. Not necessarily. You know, this was brought in to discuss the opportunity of ranked choice voting as implementation. My intent was definitely when it comes to at-large races and individual races as well.
Okay. East Hampton only did the single winner, right? Why did they only choose the single winner?
That, oh my goodness, sorry. That I don't know the answer to, but Craig can answer that question.
Okay.
Yeah, East Hampton was under a tight time crunch for getting it on the ballot. So they did something quickly just for single-seat elections. And East Hampton, I believe, is the only city, or one of only, one of two cities in the state, that do not have preliminary elections. And so they didn't have the extra incentive of applying it to multi-seat elections in order to eliminate their preliminary. They never had a preliminary. And it is the goal of the advocates in East Hampton that brought the ranked choice voting to the ballot, to add in multi-seat elections in the next year or two.
Okay. And then just to, just to clarify, when you're talking about multi-winner seats, that they have to surpass a threshold, so when you're talking about with two seats, you need a third of the vote, and it's a third plus one, right? So, yeah, you have to have over that.
Correct.
Then are the surplus votes, the plus one above the plus one, or the third?
So it's, it's, you need to get down to the plus one. So the plus one is like a number of votes?
Okay.
And like, you go down to that vote.
Yeah.
So that vote is kept.
Okay. Thanks. Okay. That's, that's it for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Varela?
Thank you, Chair Posniewski. I just wanted to state, like, if this did go through as a home rule petition, how would we actually do this? And I think that, you know, if council did vote on a home rule petition, I think what would be wise and fair is to actually put this on a ballot for the voters of Salem to decide if they want to see ranked choice voting be implemented. But I think what we could do is file a home rule petition contingent on that the majority of the Salem voters with that ballot question want to adopt ranked choice voting. And I can see Councilor Musillo has a...
I just don't know whether it would be acted on. Yeah.
In which event, it could be done the opposite way. The city of Salem could vote first and then binding to be sent for a home rule petition.
Any other questions from the council? We have our Board of Registitors here with us, so I'm sure have been... We have to get you a microphone, Mr. Bates.
Turn it, turn it, turn it on. Yeah, Donald Bates, 31 Seto's Way, Salem, Mass. I'm chairman of the Board of Registered of Olders. I understand what we are as advisory in this, that we will have a vote on this issue. We have to discuss it ourselves. I'm hearing all the positives out here so far, this majority of the discussion tonight. I know there's other negatives out there, and we need to hear those as well before we make any type of decision. There's substantial negatives out there too. So I want to hear from them as well. So that's where we'll, we'll discuss that as a committee, and we'll get back, we'll vote, and go from there. Whatever your procedures may be, I don't know when we'll do that, but I'm sure we'll put it on our schedule. Thank you.
Great. Good evening.
Good evening. Alexandra Pinedo Shields, a Board of Register, Severn Bristol Street. As you were, thank you for your presentation. As you were presenting, my mind went to our founding fathers and their concern, in particular, John Adams and James Madison, and their concern about the tyranny of the majority. Later on, and I had, actually had to look this up, so don't be impressed that I know the date. And later on, John Stuart Mill, in his 1859 book on liberty, wrote extensively on this concept of tyranny of the majority. And so I'm wondering what your thoughts are on how this voting method can be a response to our founding fathers' fear of a tyranny of the majority? They did not have the benefit of sophisticated statistical modeling at the time, we do now. And so I, you know, it popped into my head as you were speaking, so I'm wondering how you would respond.
I could be wrong, but I feel like that concept was kind of related to the idea of having like multiple chambers of government to kind of prohibit the tyranny of the majority. So I don't know whether that really applies, really, to city elections, city council. Ultimately, you know, this isn't advocating for another, you know, House, another chamber of parliament or anything like that. It's just how the elected officials for like a school committee or at-large seats are elected in terms of, in terms of that. And in that avenue, really what it does is it actually increases proportional representation. That's why these methods are called proportional representation. What it does is like the example I showed with the block voting. Oftentimes, if you have a majority party, you can win every single seat in a multi-winner election, whereas proportional representation methods like ranked choice voting will elect the candidates proportional to the electorate. So that's kind of one comment I could say on that. And maybe the worst, the only thing worse than tyranny of the majority would be tyranny of the minority. So, and that's one thing that single winner ranked choice voting actually prevents from occurring.
Yeah, just a follow-up, if I may. So Harvard Law Professor Lonnie Gwinier, in her text, Tyranny of the Majority, goes in length into quite an extensive conversation around proportional representation. And she does link the two topics together in her, in her book, Tyranny of the Majority. So in, in our town, some, some groups feel like there is a tyranny of the majority. And so I think that this, I'm not sure, I do agree with my colleagues that we need to have more information, but this may be a way of addressing those individuals in our town who do not feel like there is representation, that this beautiful body represents them. Thank you.
Thank you.
And could I ask if Craig Dennis is allowed to offer a response to that as well?
I see he has his hand raised, so go ahead, Mr. Dennis.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to echo, the council is, is right that Professor Gwinier, in her, in her work on tyranny of the majority, and in her essay, Second Prompts and Second Primaries, you know, she was a very big proponent of ranked choice voting, particularly proportional ranked choice voting and proportional representation. And the block voting method that's used for at-large offices today allows for a 51% majority to control 100% of the seats. And so that is a form of tyranny of the majority, and proportional ranked choice voting would mean we'd see those seats allocated in a proportional way where a substantial minority group could win a seat, and that would be fair and democratic. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. Anyone else from the board? Before I open it up to the Zoom audience, anyone inside the chambers who would like to get up and make a public comment? Madam Clerk?
Yes, I'm in Simon, the city clerk and ex-official of the Board of Registers. So just, I was just trying to write down some questions and answers that the, the board or the council have asked, and I know Council Dominguez asked about voter turnout. I know that you might be able to gather voter turnout from many of the other states on their voter turnout, but I'm just looking in terms of Massachusetts. And although there is not many towns or cities that do it now, I just quickly just now looked at East Hampton's website. They adopted ranked choice voting in 2019, for 2021 was their first ranked choice voting election. And I'm just quickly looking at their voter turnout, not knowing anything about their elections. But in 2017, without ranked choice voting was 43%. In 2019, without ranked choice voting was 35%. And in 2021, with ranked choice voting is 34%. So I just wanted, I just, just, you know, quickly just looked at somebody's website to see if there was something on there. You know, and, and even, I hate, you know, unfortunately, we even think vote by mail that the state implemented for us, and in-person early voting and such, unfortunately, I don't think it did what they wanted to do in terms of voter increase turnout. We've been keeping track of that, and it seems to be still, even though the way that they vote, a method of voting is dispersed, we haven't found a huge increase in voter turnout with, you know, in-person early voting and vote by mail. And we even do that, we don't do in-person, but we do vote by mail for the local elections. You know, and I just want to, like, before I continue, you know, just state, do I want increased voter turnout? Absolutely. Do we want more, you know, minorities, people of color, women, to run for office? Absolutely. I think they'd do a heck of a job. So, but I, you know, I'm just also trying to look at the facts. I did talk to Barbara in East Hampton and Julie in Arlington lately. I have a call into Cambridge, and I haven't been able to talk to, it's Atanya, I believe. Talking about submitting a home rule petition. It took each of those towns, well, East Hampton's a city, but a town, two to two and a half years to, before they got together a home rule petition because they had like an election, not a commission in terms of as we know it, but people working on the different things and what to look in for, and, you know, in terms of being able to write an ordinance about it. Because as you said, there, there is no one, one method for every city and town, that everybody's doing it differently, which is difficult. So what, so they took a lot of time before they submitted their home rule petition, whether it's going to be single races or multiple races. And I also concur with Councilor Musillo that I thought that this was just for single race, races when we first started this process, instead of plurality, can't even pronounce that, plurality races. So, and, and a lot, and these two, I think East Hampton and Arlington, if I got this correct, they, well, East Hampton did, they got their home rule petition passed first, and then they put the ballot question on a local ballot like East Hampton in 2019 because if the home rule petition doesn't pass from the state, you know, then you're putting a question on the ballot that may not be feasible or, you know, happen at all. And I do know that, I understand that some of these home rule petitions are stuck in the state because I don't think the state wants to say you can do home petition or not, or, you know, where this was, they're not, because the state overall did not vote for ranked choice voting, I don't, I mean, this is what I'm hearing from some of the town clerks, why they think it might be stuck. Some people had to resubmit them because they died in one of the legislation sessions, and they had to resubmit it, again, I think that was Arlington, because it was, it wasn't being taken up or voted on as a home rule petition to be passed in the state. And it could be because it did not pass on a state level, home rule ranked choice voting. I know it did pass in Salem. But I just, I just wanted to reiterate that I don't think we can just submit a home rule petition to the council. I don't know who would write it, how it would be written, what the method we would use we do. I, I think people, even from the outside, I know there's a lot of people in here that support it. support it and that's great, but I just want to make sure that there's a, um, a good variety of people that are on a committee that can do this research. I mean, I've been trying to do it piecemeal here as long, with everything else, but, um, you know, they can look into it, some of these stakeholders, if you want to call it such, to look into it and decide, um, how they might want to write the home rule petition and, and the ordinance that follows before the council decides on it because it shouldn't be necessarily the council that decides on, um, you know, what the, what the voters may want. So that's just, um, I want to see if I have anything else here. Um, and as for voting equipment, um, timing or not good timing or good timing, um, I do have silly old AccuVote, um, machines and I did put in out an RFP for new, um, the Imagecast or the DS 200. But at that point, um, I, we did not include anything, any qualifiers about ranked choice voting, what that would cost or what, you know, the democracy, the software would cost. So I don't know if I, you know, so right now I'm holding off on the RFP before, um, I, if I should, um, go back out there and, you know, ask those two companies to submit a supplement for, you know, ranked choice voting and their, and their software. Um, a couple of other things, we were talking about Dominion, um, before Dominion was such a bad word. I mean, I never felt that. I know a lot of other people did, um, because they're like, oh my God, you have the word. I mean, we don't have the new ballot boxes yet, but I know some of them say like Dominion right on them and, you know, people in Salem, I don't know about anywhere else, but has come up to me and say, you use Dominion? Like, how do we know that this, you know, is fair or this hasn't been rigged or whatever they want to make for comments. Um, but in the, but on the second point of just, not even if it's Dominion, I love LHS and I love their product and I, yeah, the, um, same thing with the ESNS, like, you know, I, I wouldn't have a problem whichever way we went, but, um, but the, um, but then going into that other software where it's now connected to an internet or now connected, um, you know, all these cards that, that we don't take out for like 30 days or until after the deadline is due are now being, I, I don't know for sure, taken out because I wouldn't know how they recalculated and put it into other software machines that are now on another system. And I'm a little concerned with cybersecurity because that is a big threat and I, you know, we hear it a lot in Salem about especially, um, one of the last, um, we just heard, we got beaten up basically, our office, like, everybody likes to, you know, do something good and new, but it's our office that, you know, has to enact it, get beaten up on it. I hear people say this conspiracy theory, my vote didn't count. Some people don't think their vote counts at all, regardless if you do ranked choice voting or not. I don't think they would think their, their, um, vote counts. And then the manual, um, adjudication after the, um, election, um, nobody could really answer that because I know only East Hampton, um, I think Cambridge, I, I do have a call-in, but I know they've been doing it for so long that it's not like new to them. Um, like, we already have deadlines of when our, our, um, our election results have to be finalized, even on a, um, city election, not just a local. And we already do a lot of adjustments and looking and, um, balancing out, you know, write-ins to blanks and blanks to write-ins. Now you have, um, all this other, other, um, mechanisms that have to be adjusted for is, again, I'm just hearing this, I haven't seen it done, um, that you have to worry about in terms of, um, also getting that into, um, obviously must be able to be done because they're still doing it. But, um, you know, in terms of that, I just have another concern about, you know, the, the timing and, um, and just a lot of, I'm more unanswered questions than answered questions. So that, that's my, um, my thought process and my thoughts. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Posniewski. And I want to thank the city clerk for all the information. That's, that's very helpful. Just a quick question for my own clarity and maybe for people that are, um, listening to the meeting. So if it went on the ballot for ranked choice voting, we still would need a home rule petition? Just wanted some clarity on that and the answer is yes.
Yes. Before I get to you, Council Cohen, I see that Council McCarthy in Zoom land is, uh, has his hand raised, so, and it's been there for a while, so, um, Council McCarthy, if you'd like to speak.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm being a member of the committee, can you hear me?
Yes, loud and clear.
There you go. Um, first of all, great presentation, um, always looking to try to increase voter turnout. Uh, I guess my only comments would be is, uh, with what's in front of the committee is what's the process, what needs to be done, what are the steps? Um, from experience, back when, uh, the Community Preservation Act was first brought in, it, uh, went right on the ballot, it failed the first time and it failed because there was no educational piece. The second time, um, the proponents who wanted to bring the Community Preservation, Community Preservation Act to back to the ballot, they went out and got the signatures, they did the knocking on the doors, raised awareness, media campaigns, social, social media campaigns, whatever it took to get the voters to understand the benefits of it. And regardless of what happens first, whether it's the home rule petition or it's taking it to the ballot, if you're asking me, it should, if it's going to go to the ballot, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be, uh, it should be the city council that puts it on the ballot, it should be the, the proponents and the voters who get enough signatures to get it on the ballot. And when you look at the percentage of the numbers and percentage of voter turnout, um, you don't have to look past the fact that the city of Salem has a four-year mayor. And with a four-year mayor, the turnout is always higher during a mayoral election, local mayoral election, especially when the mayoral candidate has an opponent. When you look at the numbers, you can bear them out, in the odd, on the odd years when the city council is only on the ballot, the turnout tends to be less. What drives turnout is the candidates and the issue, whether it depends who the candidates are that are running and also depends what other question that may be on the ballot turn, uh, you know, helps turnout goes. So if you're asking me if it's going to go on the ballot and if maybe there is, maybe comes out a committee, there's some sort of commission forum to figure out all the exact language and which percentages and how we're going to allot for, um, ranked choice voting and then if it's going to go to the ballot, it should go to the ballot during the mayoral election year because that would be, that would be the fairest because it would bring out traditionally the highest percentage of voters that would get a say on if, you know, we're going to change the way we vote. I don't think it should come directly onto the city council, whoever's sitting in those chairs to say that we think this is the best way that we should vote. If you're going to change the way people vote, which is a valid discussion, I wholeheartedly, uh, welcome to discussion, but I think it should come to the voters deciding and it should be on the ballot and I believe it should be on the ballot. It should be all set to go packaged up, whether the home rule petition's first or second, but it should be on the ballot during the next mayoral election. That's just my thoughts on it. And I want to thank everyone for their, uh, presentation tonight. I think it was great. I learned a lot. Like, there was a lot of questions that I had in my head that were answered and I want to thank the, uh, the presenters for their, uh, presentation.
Council Cohen.
Thank you, Chair Posniewski. I, I want to, um, I support the process as Council McCarthy said. I just have a little aside, I want to, uh, appreciate the comments by the city clerk. She and I have spent a little bit of time on home rule petitions. We've had home rule petitions just in the, in the term, the one term I've been, that have timed out, that have had to be resubmitted in the council because the calendar changes. And I'm just expressing this one thing, and this is the reason I support Council McCarthy's idea that it needs to be on the ballot. Um, we submit a home rule petition, it gets voted by the city council and someone from Florida, Mass. or Florence, Mass. or Savoy, Mass., if anyone knows where those towns are, actually has input about what we can do, the autonomy of how we do things in our community. This is actually something that, um, Council Mercilow and I talked about, I testified at the, uh, Senate today about something where, uh, 10 communities are going to be limited into a program and other communities that have done home rule petitions, uh, may not be eligible for unless there's new legislation. So I'm just expressing that I think the home rule petition process, as the clerk said, can be tedious, it can take a long time and it doesn't necessarily reflect the will of the voters. And I think this is something that the voters need to be educated on and, and vote on before we pursue it to the, to the legislature. Thank you.
Council Mercilow.
Thank you, Chair. And just to follow on with that, the more communities that send in home rule petitions, even if the legislature doesn't want to act on them, it's a signal to the legislature that we need to have this in the state. And so, you know, even, even if there is a wall there, which there is often, um, it's, it is sending a message. And I feel like a lot of times that's why we do home rule petitions is to send a message. And so there's that side too. Um, I will say back to the question of moving forward on this, um, definitely we need some sort of a commission in our working group to get all this out and all the details, um, on paper and answer all the questions from the city clerk's office and the board of electors. Um, but just as comment, if it's limited to the singles, the single winner, we're not saving any money because we still have to have preliminary elections for the other two. And it's just confusing. Either, in my mind, you either ranked choice vote all of your local elected, elections or you don't. That, and I, I don't see the need to split and say only single seat. Voters will understand, I know it's easier to explain a single seat, but in my mind, once you start doing it, you'll understand it. So just want to throw that out there too.
Council Merkel.
Thank you, Chair Posniewski. I just want to quickly say I hundred percent agree with that. If we don't do it for all the municipal elections, it defeats the purpose. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
I would just, um, like to respond, um, to Council Marco or Council Mercilow's question about, um, the local elections and saving money. I have a, um, I have a call-in to, um, the legal office in the elections, um, state elections office, um, at currently, and I'm trying to find out in terms of, because if there would be another home rule petition or, um, part of the same home rule petition is to, um, change our charter to say that there won't be any, to change it to say there won't be any preliminaries and everybody's going to be on the same ballot. So even, um, and I believe that can be done, but I am just trying to verify that. So that could be another option if this doesn't go forward or if, um, or if it's piecemeal, you know, maybe, you know, and save money as Council Varela has alluded to, like, maybe we can do that, there's no preliminaries, um, in Salem and just put everybody on the same ballot in November, like East Hampton didn't have preliminaries to begin with. So it wasn't like a cost saving for them because they already didn't do that. So I, you know, but I, and I also concur with Council McCarthy, um, that was my, my one thing was that because the mayor is every four years and they would only leave the ward counselors, um, for the ranked choice voting and, you know, and the turnout is different on different elections. And I just also wanted to, a couple of things I forgot to mention before, um, is that, um, you know, and I don't know if you know anything about this, but I heard, um, that the Maine, the state of Maine was looking to rescind the ranked choice voting or it's a bill in there to, um, to try to, um, to not, um, I don't know, do away with or eliminate ranked choice voting. I don't know if you're, have any, um, information on that. Um, I know it's just a bill that's been submitted, um, towards that.
Did you say in Maine?
Yes.
I remember the one previously that didn't pass, but Greg, are you familiar about a more recent one?
Well, Maine has expanded the use of ranked choice voting. So initially they just had it for federal, uh, all federal's general elections and primaries and state primaries. And they expanded it to presidential elections, they expanded it to allow cities and towns to do it, and they've also pursued now a constitutional amendment to allow it to be used in state general elections because they had a constitutional question there about using for state general elections. Are there still opponents in Maine, um, that would like to not see it happen? Yeah, there's a certain number of them, they're dwindling and those bills are not going anywhere. Uh, but they, you know, those opponents exist. And the people of Maine, according to polls, each year by larger margin support ranked choice.
Thank you. Um, and, and, and one thing I totally agree with, whether we go forward this, whether it takes a year, two years, or six months, whatever, um, voter education is huge, huge, huge. I don't know why the state doesn't spend more money on voter education. And I clinge every time that, um, that Galvin gets on the commercial and says, if you're independent, you have a choice of how you vote. I'm like, please don't use that word. We've been trying to eliminate that from our vocabulary for how many years, it's unrolled. And, um, I mentioned that to somebody that works for me, I said, please tell your boss to stop using the word independent in his commercials. But, um, but I tried to do voter education, um, a while back, probably right when I started and, um, we had it in Espacio and I, I can't, if, I don't know who, if anybody's here that was there besides Rochelle, I know you, I know like Lucy Cuchara, like, um, Paula Pogge, like, it was open to everybody and unfortunately, you know, there's no turnout and sometimes you just, you know, I don't know how much education you can do and, you know, you got to have the people want to pull the papers and, but I think education is huge, whether it's, um, ranked choice voting or, you know, why, why they're being asked for an ID even though you can tell them over and over again, um, you know, how the system works. I mean, I'd be more than happy to go through something like that, but, um, I, I think the state should also, you know, do their, their part of educating voters, um, you know, on, on how we vote in Massachusetts in general, but that's for another time. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I see a hand raised from our audience, if you'd like to approach the microphone and state your name and address and...
Hi, I'm Liz Brott, 22 Luchmont Road. And I just wanted to remind everyone, I think we, everyone forgot to mention that the voters did approve in 2020 by a margin of 52.5%. They voted for, in the statewide election, Salem passed this ranked choice voting by 52.5%. As the chair of the Salem Democrats, I'm happy to work with the League of Women Voters. I think Bonnie's in touch, um, and I'm in touch with some people on the Latino Leadership Convention. We'd be happy to educate people in Salem and have an educational or multiple educational events for people to learn. And, um, we'd just love the city council to move this forward in any way they can, give us direction, you know, tell us, if you want us to go out and get 5,000 signatures, we'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else come on up to the microphone, please?
And, and Liz mentioned the 52.5%, which is great because I didn't mention that, but on question two in 2020, 52.5% of Salem voters did vote in favor of ranked choice voting. However, it is important to be objective here too and, uh, understand that there, that was only for single winner races in statewide elections. So that was different than municipal elections, which does include multi-winner elections and stuff like that. So, you know, I, I think it is indicative of, you know, people in Salem being in favor of ranked choice voting, um, to some level. It's, it's not like perfect, but, uh, it definitely is some indication. I agree with, like as Liz was saying.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council and chair. Philippines in Berlini, 19 Linden Street, uh, here in Salem. Um, I'm going to give a bit of a personal comment. I'm running for city council at large and I hear confusion at the doors. And when I was door knocking for candidates wearing this body, um, back in two years and four years ago as well, I also heard confusion at the doors. So our current system is already creating significant confusion. And when I talk to my wife about what we like, it's a lot easier to think about, well, I would like to be able to have a little bit of coffee that has creamer or how much creamer I want on it. Okay, if you don't have creamer, what do you have then? Okay, I'm going to go half and half. All right, if you don't have half and half, what do you do then? Well, I'm going to put milk. If you don't have milk, what do you want? Well, I don't want black coffee. Right, so I'm going to make sure that I go get it somewhere, maybe that's an alternative option. option for me. We know how to do that. And in our current system, our voters do struggle. I door knocked a lot in the point, when I lived in the point until recently, and very regularly I heard from voters, oh, for at-large, but I'm voting for this other candidate already. Why are you telling me to vote for someone else? And folks consistently did not understand, even though it says on the ballot in English and Spanish, you can vote up to four individuals. That concept sometimes is a little difficult to grasp, that you can pick four individuals to select when traditionally speaking votes are, you pick one and that's the winner that goes forward. So I just wanna say that it's a really good idea to make sure that we're moving forward with both, just as Counsel Marcello said, instead of just one or, or one or the other. Uh, but this can really help ease the confusion that folks have. And we kinda have a situation that's pretty unique right now on our hands in the current election, that it's a very short primary election for the, like, this coming election right now, and folks are confused already. Folks don't know if there's gonna be a primary, and we're not really going to know until all the signatures are counted, and that's not gonna happen until just about a month and a half, at the very most, before the actual primary, preliminary election. And as I'm talking to voters at the doors, they're asking, well, you're telling me that there's gonna be an election on the date that the city council says in the calendar there's gonna be a preliminary? But so-and-so just came to my door saying to vote for them in November, so which is the truth? And so, this is a rare example, of course, because we had a special election, it's very unique, and hopefully we don't ever have to do another special election, but in a situation as such, there's natural confusion. No one caused this confusion. The clerk did not cause the confusion, the mayor, mayor, from former mayor becoming lieutenant governor didn't cause the confusion. The special election didn't necessarily inherently cause the confusion, but the system that we have unfortunately is causing a confusion, where multiple at-large candidates are saying different things, and all those things are actually right. We don't know right now if there's going to be a preliminary. And so some are willing to say there's not gonna be, and some are not willing to say there's not gonna be, and some are just saying, maybe there is, maybe there isn't, vote for me anyways. Uh, so, it's, it's confusing, this is a better system, especially the opportunity that we have to eliminate those primaries and make sure that folks understand. Folks already know how to make choices. So this is a really great model. I suggest that we do do something ASAP. The next mayoral election is just around the corner, realistically, so if we're gonna have a commission put together to think about how to do this, then it needs to start yesterday, or today, rather, as you're all doing here today, or if need be to think about, there may be other big elections. U.S. Senate election may be coming up soon, that's an election that also has major turnout. If somehow we're not able to meet that threshold of the next mayoral, pick the next biggest election so that we're not waiting five years, or six years to get us to the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you. You can step up to the microphone. Name and address, please.
Thank you. My name's Lois Sargent, and I live at 10 Norman Street here in Salem. I still remember the first time I voted, it was very exciting, and I have voted for 68 years, and I have to tell you, I have never, ever had to come to a meeting to learn how to vote, or what the vote was about. I knew that. I knew how to vote, I came to vote, and that's the wonderful thing about our country. My vote is just as powerful as Einstein's vote. As any of you in this room, my vote is just as powerful, my one vote. And I don't want that taken away from me, I don't like the rank voting, um, I like having my one powerful vote. And I was, I have to say, I had written out a whole bunch of stuff that I was gonna say, but when I came here and I listened to the presentation, I tell, I have to say, I was totally appalled, really appalled. The first thing that I was told was that voters don't need to know the flaws of this system. And then, I was told that you, or whoever was doing it, would take care of it. And then I proceeded to see how you took the votes for this candidate, that candidate, that candidate, and if this candidate didn't get enough votes, then you took his votes and you moved them, and you kept moving votes around. I didn't go to the polls to have you vote, move my vote. If my candidate lost, he lost, and that's it. And yes, I was one of those people that voted for Ralph Nadar, because we thought that we were doing the right thing at that time. I also, uh, one of the things that, uh, I heard discussed, that one of the advantages of this, uh, system would be that it would save money particularly for the city, because you would have just the one primary, you wouldn't have to have repeats. Well, I'll say to you the same thing I said all the years that I was lobbying, grassroots lobbying for national health care. What is more important to a country than the health and well-being of its people? And what is more important to you and to all of us is than to preserve that right for our one very powerful vote that didn't, that didn't matter. The founding fathers, I heard some discussion about the founding fathers. We were a country that you didn't have to own land, you didn't have to have a particular salary, you could be a homeless person, or you could be a professor, or whatever, and you still had the same vote. And that's very important, and, uh, I'm sorry if it does cost a little bit more to have more vote, of more, uh, elections, but I think it's worth it to give your people the right to express themselves. I vote a bu, I vote a book for children, because my children used to be very upset because they were dragged around to city, county, uh, elections, and mommy, we did that, yes, but we did it for our city, now we're doing it for our county, now we're doing it for our state. So I have a book for little kids about your one house in your city, in your state, in your county, and look in your great United States, and you're still here and you still have obligations. Um, I think there's a lot that needs to be correct, corrected, and, um, I think what you really need to be working on is, uh, campaign financing reform. I think that's where the problem is. That's why you don't get the candidates that you want to be voting for. Anyway, um, thank you for the opportunity for expressing myself, and like I said, please don't tamper with my vote. I wanted to scream out, you know, that man needs to be arrested, he's tampering with the vote. No, I think that everybody goes to the polls and we, we give our choices, not your choices. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Biden, member of the board of registrars?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Chuck Barton, I'm on the board of registrars, I'm also a resident of Ward Four. Uh, so I'm here kind of making a comment from two different points of view. Uh, I am specifically neither for or against this specific process, because it is just a process. It's no necessarily better than the process we have, some would argue that it is, others would argue that it isn't, but it is a process nonetheless. However, to the point that was actually made by the gentleman that actually got up and spoke, I don't think that confusion is going to be the big difference here, and here's why I'm gonna say that. If the confusion of, oh, I didn't know I needed to vote for four only once, was tough, then saying only vote for not more than four up to 12 times, that's going to be more complicated. So, I hope you understand what I mean by this. So, so the comment that he had made was, uh, people were confused about going to vote for a councillor at large, where you get to vote for no more than four. But now you're gonna do that in a ranked voting, where you get however many choices of ranking based on how many candidates you have, correct? That's how it works? So now you're gonna vote for, I vote for four, number one, I vote for another four, number two, I vote for another four, number three, I vote for number, another four, number four. Is that how it works? Just wanna be clear here, because if you, if you're still voting for number four...
Could you, could you repeat your thought one more time?
Sure, thank you. In the standard vote for councillor at large, you pick for not more than four. So I go in and I say, I want candidate one, candidate two, candidate three, candidate four, I'm not voting for whatever after that. That's how it currently votes. In this ranked voting, are you saying that you're going to remove that, or are you going to add to that? So now you're gonna have ranked voting, where you have my primary votes of my four candidates that I pick, and then the second vote of the next four that I want?
So, the way it works is, let's say there's four at-large seats, okay? Let's say there are eight candidates running?
Yes.
So what you have are the eight candidates listed in order, and then you have a column each of the way over. The first column will say first choice, second choice, third choice, so you can rank up to all of the candidates as you would like. So you can rank, you can designate which of those eight candidates is your first choice, which is your second choice, which is your third choice, which is your fourth, and so on.
Interesting. In some ways it takes away a little bit of power and adds a little bit of power, so it's, it's a balancing act. Here's why I'm saying that. So when you're voting for the four as we do now, it's the equivalent of your primary vote, of your first, of ranking number one, for all four of them. In reality, that's what you're doing, within the individual.
Say that one more time?
Within the individual who's voting, when they vote for the one, when they vote for their four candidates, so if I vote for Posniewski, I vote for him, I vote for the other three candidates, they are the equivalent of my first choices every single time, right?
Exactly, exactly. And just like councillor Cohen said, you know, you're basically ranking your first choice and your fourth choice the same, basically?
Yeah, exactly.
Good.
Okay, so, I think that in and of itself is gonna bring another level of confusion. People are gonna be like, well, I don't understand, this is the person that I really want, but I've got all these other rankings, does this mean the second person's not gonna get as much? And that's kinda where I think you're gonna lose some people, and you're gonna create another level of complexity or confusion. And in, in the attempt to try to alleviate confusion, you're gonna create a whole other confusion. So it's not necessarily better or worse, it is different. Um, I, I guess I would say to the councillors, don't be hasty, and I know you're probably thinking that you weren't, uh, don't be hasty, think long and hard. Um, and I don't envy your decision, but, good luck. Thank you. Thank you, madam, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And just to the point of the confusion too, you know, you know, there's all sorts of things that confuse voters, right? Um, you know, and one thing, you know, maybe some voters will get confused by ranking choices, right? Right now, even when you just pick four candidates, voters are confused by that, right? They're confused on whether they even should vote for a fourth candidate or not, because will it make their actual favorite less likely to win? Um, so that's a level of confusion that already does exist, um, which doesn't exist in ranked choice voting, that specific level, possibly a new level of confusion could get introduced. Um, so, just wanted to talk about that.
Thank you. Okay, before we end the meeting, I'd just like to add my comment, because I am a member of the council, and, um, whether you're for or against it, I think there's another implication that we should be looking at, and I think Counsel Marcello actually alluded to it, but I just wanna back her up on this, and that's the, that's the legality of, of putting the responsibility on Salem to develop a policy and procedure that's gonna be, that could be tested. Um, we, we've had elections that were closed, elections by one vote, and if some candidate decides that they wanna recount, and they wanna litigate this, they're gonna fall back on how this was all written and brought up, and they, the, the recount is simple the way it's done now, but a recount done under ranked choice voting would be a lot more complicated, and I'm sure it would take a lot more time, and the end result would take a lot more, um, time to find out who the, what the results were. I just find it, just find that the state should be taking the responsibility of developing something before, if, if cities and towns are gonna adopt this, there should be some kind of, um, some kind of bible on, this is the way it's gonna work, and this is the state's experts that have written this, so that, uh, if it is, it's, it doesn't fall on, on us as a community to have to write something that we're, that we may not get it right, you know, let it fall back on a, on a higher, on a higher level. So, again, like I say, with, whether it, not it's, whether you're for it or against it, that's something that should be under consideration. Counsel Cohen?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Really great discussion, uh, I think I learned a lot, even though I thought I knew enough. And so I'd like to move that we keep this in committee.
Counsel Cohen moves that we keep this in committee, seconded by Andy Varela. All those in favor? We have three, four, and, three, four, none against that, motion passes. Counsel Varela?
Thank you, Chair Posniewski. Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion to adjourn, yeah, adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, presenters, very, very informative, very educational, thank you.
And thank you all for considering this.
Thank you.